Thank you, Ben. All right, we'll call them into order with roll call.
Bronchway, Schulte.
Here.
Gargano.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Friends.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Loopsen.
Here.
Mieressis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council will receive information on non-agenda topics brought before the council members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics. They will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anyone who's on the agenda which should be heard? Move to consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. Before I read through them, just so everyone knows, all their friends will be voting but abstaining from number three, her appointment to the Parks Committee. Consent agenda. Number one, approve of minutes for the meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Number two, appointment of Anne Frankie, Reesburg School District to the Reesburg Industrial Commercial Development Commission. And number three, appointment of all their missy friends to the Parks and Rec Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor proclamation and presentations. We have one item for the evening and that's to administer oath of office to Police Officer Andrew Tepley. Andrew, have him come up to the front here. We're gonna go in front here by throwing time. So they catch us under camera. I agree with that. Are you everybody walking forward? Raise your right hand and repeat after me on that. I Andrew Stepley, Tepley.
I Andrew Tepley.
Having been appointed officer of police officer.
Having been appointed the officer of police officer.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and partially discharge.
Faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Awesome. Welcome to the board here. Get the calls in your background quick if you would. Your background a little bit where you kind of where you grew up.
Emergently from Galena, Illinois. That's where I went to high school and stuff like that. I moved from there, went to Southwest Tech. Got my degree from there, attended academy there. I moved to Ryland, Wisconsin, worked for the United High Sheriff's Office there. I'm good.
Perfect. Welcome to Reesburg. Thank you. All right, general business. We have three items for the evening. Item one is approved denied resolution forty-four ninety dash twenty-two. Seeking membership into the AARP network of age-friendly communities. Josh Hawke, hi, noon tonight. Josh Blake. I've done that to you in the past, too.
Funny Josh.
Josh Colalki, hi, noon tonight.
Brother good Josh.
You're both good Josh, as just in case Joshua sees this too.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. So I ran across this program. This is the AARP network of age-friendly states and communities. And essentially what this program does is it would create an advisory committee. And we would work with the AARP of Wisconsin. It's a free program. And this advisory committee first would do a needs assessment for the city. And then we would work through basically a plan. Developing a whole bunch of different programs potentially or looking at different areas. Some of those areas are recreation, transportation, community activities, health options, communication and housing. So all these things would come back to the council, come back to the city as recommendations. And basically the goal of the program is to improve life for the population as it ages. So just looking at statistics in twenty-ten, fifteen percent of our population was sixty-five or older. By the time we get to twenty-forty, twenty-five percent of our population will be sixty-five or older. So we're gonna have considerable growth in that that older population. So the reason this caught my eye is as EMS director, the number one call that we go on is falls, quite honestly. So it's people falling down. So you know, there's a, that's a significant number and something that potentially we could find some resources to help on the EMS side of things. And then on the emergency management side, there's communicating with all age groups really. And this doesn't just focus on people sixty-five or older. It's really to make the the community better as a whole. I think it's gonna work nicely into the comprehensive plan that the the city has worked on and recently approved. There's nine other communities currently in Wisconsin on the part of this program. I included that in the staff report. And ultimately, to get started would be pretty easy. It's a resolution from the council with a letter signed by the mayor. We send that off to the AARP of Wisconsin and then start figuring out who would be on this advisory committee. Obviously, we want people from multifaceted life in the community. And start discussing how a needs assessment would work.
Very good. Awesome idea. Council, questions? Comments?
Josh, have you talked, you said there's nine other communities. Have you talked to any of the people involved in this program in those communities?
I didn't talk to any specific communities. Some of them have been in it for five years or more. I talked to the, a person from the AARP who had talked about some of the successes they've added to communities. As far as creating programming and, you know, really developing some things as far as the need that they found in those communities. I didn't talk to any specific communities.
Thank you. The need is definitely there now, but as time goes by, that number is going to increase. But quite a bit as the baby will restart to retire. Tim, that's not you. You're not retiring. Just want to throw that out there. Anything further? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bronchway. Seconded by Friends. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks a whole bunch, Josh.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night. Number two, approved denied resolution forty-four ninety-one dash twenty-two. Establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed one million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars general obligation community development bonds.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our our step towards going to bond for this. Is it okay if I talk about two and three at the same time? So you can see that they're split up. One is non-tax and one is taxed. That's because the non-tax is the things that we use primarily for city functions like infrastructure, roads, sewer water connection, those types of things. Things that are taxed are the things that we actually use as incentives. So the, a number two, resolution forty-four ninety-one, those are gonna, that resolution covers our grant matches for CDB and EDA out at the business park. So it'll take care of our portion of South Gulf Course Road, the intersection, lighting the intersection, that stub road of Skinner Drive. And then the remaining portion of that would be the EDA grant. Our match of that will take care of the rest of that project, cutting the infrastructure through that field. And getting ourselves all to one thirty-six and just the connection of the sewer and water back to, back to the loop over on South Winkle. So that's what those two are about. And as you can see, the majority of these are in TIDS. Either TID eight or TID nine or potentially the newly created TID eleven. So when you start to talk about that, then it's, although we didn't factor it into this, I'm sure you looked at the schedule for repayment. As the TID builds more and more increment, that's what that increment is used for is to pay off the debt service that we have accumulated through here. Up to this point, that debt doesn't, or that TID doesn't have enough money to cover this in cash, so then we borrow for that or bond for it. Because I can take any questions specific.
Very well put. Any questions for Tim? Comments? Concerns? It's quiet tonight. All right. I'll take a motion. What's in order?
Individually?
Yes.
I make a motion for forty-four ninety-one dash two-two.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? You want to roll call on this?
It's just a resolution.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then number three, approved denied resolution forty-four ninety-two dash twenty-two. Authorizing issuance establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed three million, four hundred and five thousand dollars taxable general obligation promised very notes.
Just, and again, those projects are the Field House, the TID eight incentive for the land over on K Street in South Albert. And the TID nine apartment complex incentive for the third building.
Any questions for Tim? Take a motion. What's in order?
Motion to approve forty-four ninety-two dash twenty-two.
Motion by Kane.
Second.
Seconded by Gargano. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Recommendations from boards, committees, commissions, from the planning commission, first reading instead of public hearing. For January ninth, twenty twenty-three, on ordinance nineteen forty-six dash twenty-two. Here's all those zeros again. Resoning parcel seven-six dash two-five-three-seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. And two-seven-six dash two-five-six-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. Two-seven-six dash two-five-six-three dash one-zero-zero-zero. Two-seven-six dash two-five-six-three dash two-zero-zero-zero-zero. And two-seven-six dash two-five-six-three dash three-zero-zero-zero-zero. From B two business and R two residential to B three business and R three residential generally located eight hundred block of South Everett Avenue in the middle subdivision. Brian?
So there is a developer right now looking to develop a formal housing development. It's contingent on tax credits that they're applying for. But if they're approved, the island parcel, if you will, would be a lower density multifamily development area. And the frontage parcel on the highway would be more of a higher density, but also with a commercial component. Because the comp plan, the future land use map does indicate mixed use in that area. So it'd be both commercial and residential. And the planning commission did recommend approval for this.
Any questions for Brian? We had a special meeting before council hearing that is out of the press, so I appreciate that Brian getting that together. I'll take a motion to set public hearing. What's in order?
Move to set the public hearing for January ninth on ordinance nineteen forty-six dash twenty-two.
Motion by Coniston.
Second.
Seconded by Bronchway. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll have that on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. And number two, from the planning commission, approved denied first reading instead of public hearing for January ninth, twenty twenty-three. For ordinance nineteen forty-seven dash twenty-two. Resoning parcel two-seven-six dash two-zero-four-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. To government and rezoned parcels two-seven-six dash one-three-eight-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. Two-seven-six dash two-zero-three-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero. And two-seven-six dash one-three-eight-zero dash four-zero-zero-zero-zero. To R three residential. All parcels were previously zoned agricultural. And R two residential parcels are generally located in the fourteen-hundred block of Eighth Street. Brian, that's the last zero for the evening.
All right. So the, so the most northerly parcel, that's the one on the hillside that would stay undeveloped as the, so that'd be zone government that uses parkland. The other parcels are used for the possible fifty-five and up housing development that the city's looking to do. So therefore those would be rezoned to that to R three multifamily residential. And this was also just approved, recommended approval by the planning commission.
Any questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian. Council discussion, or I'll take a motion if what's in order.
Move to set a public hearing for January ninth, twenty twenty-three for ordinance nineteen forty-seven twenty-two.
Motion by Gargano.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, from Public Works, is approved denied bid for TID nine business park signal equipment purchase award. Steve Farquhar tonight.
Good, thank you, Mayor. This is for the signals that we're gonna put up on Gulf Course Road and East Main Street. So this is just for the poles and the, I call them trombone arms that go across the intersection. So that's all this is for. And the reason why we wanted to do this is because some of this equipment is six months lead time. So we're bidding this out and then we'll bid out in winter, natural construction and the rest of the equipment for the intersection. So it'll be built sometime in the summer. So we wanted to get this going first so we could get the, get these poles ordered. And we had one bid from Tapco, which was sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And Tapco is a supplier that we use for all our other signals. There is a couple other suppliers in the state, but Tapco is the only one that bid on it. Public Works recommended approval.
Any questions for Steve Vanning to add from Public Works Committee?
No, sir. Thank you.
Discussion. I'll take a motion if what's in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Schulte.
Second.
Seconded by Kane. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve. City administrator budget report. Tim?
It's done. So if we talk about the the city mill rate and the city mill rate, and only the city mill rate, I wanted to bring you guys up to speed what the entire mill rate is going to be. If you recall, the city did raise the mill by fifteen cents, which caused a rate of, or an increase of fifteen dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house or sixty dollars on a four hundred thousand dollar house. So we finally were able to get all the mill rates from all the participating political subdivisions. And brought the lottery credit in to subtract that, the first dollar transaction, and then add it back in garbage. So on a hundred thousand dollar house, it looks like twenty-six dollars. And on a four hundred thousand dollar house, it looks like four hundred and seventy-three dollars. So when your constituents call you and say, hey, I thought my taxes really could go up thirty bucks and instead they're up a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Please explain to them that we're not the only taxing jurisdiction. The school mill rate went from seven dollars and eighty-four cents to eight dollars and eighty cents, an increase of ninety-six cents. And the county went from three seventy-nine to four seventeen, an increase of thirty-eight cents. So although we're responsible for some of that, we're certainly not responsible for all of that. So please keep that in mind. I know we're gonna get complaints at the front counter about taxes going up. And we will have diagrams and pie charts and explanations, but it's always gonna come back to them calling you on the phone and saying, where did my taxes go up? So I can get you a copy of this if you would like that as a cheat sheet. If someone does call you, let me know. But I just wanted to make that clear to you right up front before the tax bills come out in a couple weeks.
Very good info. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Commission, committee board staff reports. Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec last met and we had update on the Field House from Tim and South School update from Tim. We discussed the the ongoing development of the Inclusive Park at Webb. And then Matt gave an update on winterizing our park system.
Which is more than a one-day job, that's for sure. Let's see, Public Works.
Public Works did meet last week. We talked about the signal equipment purchase that we just awarded to Tapco. Just as a note, the lead times on this equipment is is starting to get out there. Just as an example, we have not yet received a one-ton truck that we ordered last November. So you may be seeing some more of these coming forward so that we can get these lead times out there. And and try to get this equipment in so these projects aren't delayed because of of that purchase, those purchases. Public Works Department is officially done picking up leaves, so please don't put leaves out into the gutter or on the tree banks. Because it will, they will not be picked up. So prepare for the snowfalls and.
Tree cutting.
Tree cutting.
You see, pink axes, that's, that's a telltale sign. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Utility Commission.
Utility Commission held a special meeting on November fourteenth to approve light-speed budgets. And then we met on the twenty-first for our regular meeting. We are still interviewing a few candidates for light-speed customer service rep. One kind of bragging point, we partnered with Bistro and Barley, Deli Bean, Donny's, Greenwood's, Jay's Pub and the Country Club to sponsor Veterans Day meals. Two hundred and six veterans were honored for their service with a free meal. So that was a, it was a great turnout. Electric crew is removing equipment from the retired main substation. That's not gonna be a process that's gonna take, you know, a matter of weeks. But we're also doing infrared inspection of the system. And as long as the the good weather holds, fiber construction is progressing in White Mountain, Excelsior and Fairfield. We're continuing to turn up new customers in these projects. So another full meeting.
Very full meeting. Always something going on, which is good. Plan Commission, we had a special meeting here right before this meeting and you guys wanted to set public hearing for those rezonings. So that was the bulk of our meeting. Library Board.
Library Board is continuing to interview candidates this week for the Assistant Director position. Other than that, we do not have a regular meeting.
Very good. Any other committee, commission, staff member who didn't announce that has anything I want to report?
Ambulance Commission.
Ambulance Commission.
Do you want to take it?
Go ahead, Anne, since you brought it up.
Ambulance Commission met last Tuesday. Yes. We met to approve or deny the addition of the building, which was basically tabled until tomorrow night. When we're gonna have another, an open forum so people can get more information before it's decided on. And all you are invited to come at six.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock tomorrow.
The tour is at six.
The tour is at six. Meeting at seven at the ambulance garage. Everybody's invited, so.
Especially to see the the space that they don't have for people that have to stay there and sleep there. What'd they say? They had space for five and they have six people that sleep there?
I think two people sleep in the closets, so.
Correct. Definitely not up to code. Brian, you're not here anymore again. Just kidding. All right, uh, let's see. Officer Mayor, just want to touch on a couple things coming up. This Saturday is Christmas in City Park. That was the mayor's tree lighting. There's a new committee that's taking that over and they've kind of expanded that. So I think that starts like three o'clock. There's like hot chocolate and caroling and Christmas stories. And I think six o'clock is the actual tree lighting. Santa Paws will be there. I do believe they have a group that's going to be getting on a way. And I do believe at the trailhead and going around like on Main Street and Caroling. And they're gonna go around town after the event at six. So that they want actually that group, they're gonna combine together. And they're actually looking at starting a actual parade next year, Christmas light parade. So that'll be really neat to see too. So hopefully that can come to fruition. So make sure you get there for, that'll be a pretty good event. The water's supposed to be pretty decent. I'm excited to have that back. And then the following Friday, the ninth, is Living Windows Downtown. Hopefully the weather's just as good. Fingers crossed it will be. It's always a well-attended event. And I know a lot of downtown businesskeepers are definitely friskishly working right now to get their windows ready and their ideas are ready to go. So I can't wait to see everybody down there for that as well. Hard to believe it's almost Christmas time. Tom Stevenson.
Nothing tonight.
Dave Coniston.
Twenty-six shopping days remain.
Phil Peterson.
Yes, twenty-six days to shop locals. Perfect.
Yes. Missy Friends.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Matt?
Nothing for me.
Jules?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you for filling in for Jacob.
You're welcome.
If your watch is Jacob, get well soon. Tim Becker?
Nothing, sir.
Mike Gargano.
Election is over. Lawn signs are not art. Take them down.
There's your quote of the day from Mike Gargano. That's Mike Gargano with a G. Jason Schulte.
Hearing the utility report made me think that don't text and drive. And when you see utility signs, slow down and pay attention. We don't need, I don't want Mike to have to read that report that somebody was hit and killed along the road. So please stay off your phones when you're driving through those areas, anywhere really. But especially if you see one of those utility signs, men at work, they go to work and want to go home, so.
Good point. Greg Bronchway?
Just wanted to thank Darren, I know he's not here, but for his time on the council. So hopefully he's watching this and thank you very much for your time.
I know that he wanted to go quietly and quietly he went. So yes, thank you to Darren for all his efforts at the council. I think that's the bottom of the page here, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Gargano. You've been on the ball tonight. Seconded by Friends. Ladies first. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Think so. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.